Good afternoon, welcome to the afternoon session of the Planning Development Control. It's Wednesday 2nd of December and 2 o'clock. I'll call upon first of all Dave Shaw, our committee clerk today, to do a roll call of the members of the committee and inform us which officers are present this afternoon. Over to you Dave.
Yes, thank you Chair. councillor Clea.
Yes, present.
Thank you councillor Evans.
I'm here, yes.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Present.
Councillor Laming.
Present.
Councillor McLean.
Present.
Councillor Reed.
Present.
Thank you councillor Raphael.
Present.
And councillor Rutter.
Present.
Thank you Chair, that's all members present for the afternoon session. We're also joined this afternoon by Julie Pinnock, Service Lead for the Built Environment, Michael Woods, our legal officer for the afternoon, Megan Osborne, the planning case officer for items 10, 11, 12 and 13, Joan Ashton from Strategic Planning, and Mark Fletcher, council officer inward investment in economic development. Also I'm David Shaw from Democratic Services, and I'm supported this afternoon by Nancy Graham, also from Democratic Services, thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome to you all. We have a slightly unusual afternoon in that we have four applications. They've all got the same application number, which you see in front of you on the screen, 19/01219 F U L, but they all have different content. So the first one, agenda item 10, is the application 1, Variation of Goods Condition on the Application 14/02880 F U L to change from bulky goods to A1 retail. The case officer is Megan Osborne, good afternoon Megan.
Good afternoon.
And when you're ready for your presentation, please go ahead.
First I'll talk through the applications. There are four applications on this Homebase application on the site. Number one, which I will talk through first, and I'll talk through them separately. Number one is for the variation of that condition on the original application that was applied in 2014 to change it from selling bulky goods items to A1 retail. And then we will debate that and have questions on that case. And then we'll go to application number two and three and four, which are for various things. I'll talk you through each of them as they come up.
Yeah, and just as a point of clarification, we're going to treat them all separately. So we will not only debate it, but we will vote on each one separately.
That's right, yes. The site is located within the industrial state of Winnow. It is accessed off a large roundabout with Tesco's Extra off one side of the roundabout. It also accesses into Winchester city centre along Eastern Lane and up to another part of Eastern Lane, which leads to a large roundabout, which serves the M3, the A272 and the A34. Adjacent to the site is a car sales area with a small road that runs along, adjacent to the site, to other industrial units beyond. The current unit is occupied by Homebase with a car park area to the front of the building. Homebase was built with a planning application that was granted in 1993, with a condition on it that restricted it to the sales of goods for DIY furniture, carpets and electrical items. In 2015, this condition was amended to allow for a small section of the shop to sell non-food items by catalogue only. In this case it was Argos. This application seeks to vary the condition for the whole building to allow for the sales of food and convenience goods and for the sale of non-food goods. This will effectively be for an A1 use class retail, with some restrictions on the amount of floor area used for the sale of food. It shall not be used to the sale of clothes and fashion goods, except for sportswear. The permission would change the use of the building from the sale of bulky goods to A1 retail. This application is recommended for refusal for the reasons I set out in my report. Mark Fletcher from the Economic Development Team would like to say a few words in relation to this application. Thank you Mark.
Thank you Megan, thank you for allowing me to speak to members today. As noted during Megan's presentation, the officer's recommendation is to refuse the application. We support the officer's recommendation in relation to this application. The relevant information to support this recommendation has been outlined by the officer in the report in relation to the planning policies, notably the promotion of Town Centre First. The application was also contrary to the local plan strategy for Winnow area and also notably the Retail and Town Centre Use Study undertaken by the Strategic Planning Team also concluded that no pressing need for the provision of additional retail floor space for food store or general retailing that would require additional sites was demonstrated in a short or medium term. It is also noted in the Planning Policy Commons that the current economic situation will only emphasise the importance of supporting the role and function of Winchester Town Centre in directing any future retail development to this location in the first instance. It is therefore apparent that the planning policy supports Town Centre, the development outside of this would in this instance be detrimental to the Town Centre. I remember to be aware that the Town Centre is going through a period of change in view of the changing habits as people live differently and this presents challenges for the Town Centre. It is also clear the changes in the world economy and the way he'll be living over the last nine months has had a massive impact on the Town Centre. It's noticeable that the vacant property level has gone up from 6.9 to 9.1 in October. Vacant units do exist within the Town Centre. Notably the Lord Ashley Store and Yegas Store is currently vacant. I'm also sure in the current climate we would wish to obviously support further visitors to the Town Centre. I'm also sure members to be aware that additional units may well become available going forward, notably with the situation with Debenhams and the ongoing collapse of the Arcadia Group. We're also of the view that approval will set an unfortunate precedent for the future applications for retail developments outside the Town Centre. It should be harmful for the success of the Town Centre going forward and would also result in the loss of potential unit for bulky goods in this location. Winchester is lucky to benefit from a vibrant Town Centre. The introduction of an additional A1 retail unit outside the Town Centre would be detrimental to the Town Centre. I would therefore urge members to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you members.
Thank you very much. We also have Joan Ashton here this afternoon. Joan, did you want to answer questions or did you want to say something before that?
Thank you Chair. Only thing I am able to say at the moment is if I will answer questions if they're about the report. I think the report goes into quite a lot of detail. There are quite a few issues here. The sequential test, which is the Town Centre First approach, which my colleague has just been speaking about. Potential impact on plan and future developments in the Town Centre. So that would be the Silver Hill area. And also let us not forget that there is a food store specifically involved in this application. And that has particular relevance to ongoing development in the north of Winchester where a food store is also being proposed. And these are all alluded to in the report, so I can answer questions later if there are any.
Thank you very much. So Megan, is that the end of your presentation?
It is, thank you Chairman.
So we'll move on then to the public speaking. So we have one objector and one supporter. And I noticed Mr Vendy, Mr Simmons, that you've registered to speak on all four applications. So if you could just keep your comments to this application, which is the varying the goods condition, and then we'll come to the other applications all in turn. So we'll start with Mr Vendy. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Chair, thank you very much.
And so when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Understood. Just for clarity, I've set out my representations in four separate sections, so happy to fall in with the format there. Fundamentally, the reason for the original condition back in 1993 was for the protection of the Town Centre, sorry, the City Centre. Nothing has changed in this regard, as far as I can tell. Indeed, the advent of Covid has increased the need to ensure that the traditional retail centres are provided with every opportunity to adapt and evolve and recover. It is one of the few constants within planning law since the original planning permission was granted, that Town Centres and District Centres and City Centres indeed do come first. I don't see any evidence here to suggest to me that that approach should be altered. I'd like to emphasise as well that out-of-centre provisions such as the Homebase location are not given any preferential treatment or protection under national and local planning policy, all of which guide retail to Town and City Centres in the first instance as the most sustainable locations within the hierarchy. Your officers already highlighted matters such as the Silver Hill and the Barton Farm sites, which I set out fully in my objection letter, which I hope everybody's seen. I conclude that there's consequently a direct conflict with adopted policy in seeking to provide new retail floor space during the development plan. And I maintain our objection to the proposals. I'm well within my time limit there and I won't hold you up any further Chair.
Is everything okay?
Absolutely, I've finished sir.
Dave, have we got councillor?
I don't know whether we've got councillor Evans, so we can see her image but not actually open her cameras at the moment Dave.
Ah, here we go.
There we are.
So sorry, elementary error. So Vice Chair, have we got any questions for Mr Vendy?
No questions Chair, except for myself, I have a small question if I may.
Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Mr Vendy. You didn't say, just for the benefit of our listeners at home, who you are representing, if you could just let us know who that is please.
My apologies, my apologies. I'm representing Homebase, the current occupier of the building. Their position here is that they don't want to move, they are a leaseholder on the building. The application I think is being promoted by the landlord of the building. Homebase would like to stay put, they would like to stay where they are and are therefore resisting resisting an application which I think is unnecessary from their perspective. I hope that clarifies matters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last four questions?
Yes Chair, we have a question from councillor McLean. And, no, that's it. Oh no, he says no need now, so perhaps we've already covered that issue, thank you.
Councillor McLean, do you have a question?
No councillor Rutter had it spot on, the last answer was the one I was looking for.
Okay, thank you. Right, so there being no more questions for you, Mr Vendy, thank you very much for
Thank you.
your contribution. If you could just turn your microphone and camera off, that would be great. And we'll move then on to the supporter, Danny Simmons. Good afternoon, Mr Simmons.
Good afternoon Chair, good afternoon Committee. My name is Danny Simmons, I'm a planning consultant from RPS and I'm representing Royal London, who is the freehold owner of the application site. A number of points are relevant to the whole package of proposals, but particularly to this application to vary the goods condition. Firstly, this application site and the application property, it is an existing retail unit comprising a significant level of existing floor space, which is about 6,000 square metres. The proposals do not result in an increase in ground floor retail space. And the fact that we have an existing retail building in an out-of-centre location is highly relevant in terms of policy but also impact and sequential test. Secondly, the retail unit currently allows for the sale of a range of goods, albeit largely bulky goods. But it is possible to change the unit from a DIY store to a store selling other goods. Accordingly, the current goods condition and the current permission does not provide protection to Homebase or indeed to any other retailer. But in response to the comments from the last speaker, particularly at the end, you should be aware that Homebase do have an existing lease on the property and significantly, a new five-year lease was agreed with Homebase at the end of 2019. And for the avoidance of doubt, these applications, they are not designed to remove Homebase. Rather, they are purely to future-proof the building in what everyone now appreciates is a very, very difficult and uncertain market. In terms of policy, our interpretation, certainly a reasonable interpretation, is that the local plan policy, policy WIN11, does allow for the principle of retail on this application site. So there's no legitimate grounds, in my opinion, to resist this application on policy or local plan grounds. Specifically with regard to this application, you should be aware that the applicants have submitted a very full and thorough retail assessment which addresses both retail impact and the sequential test. Impacts upon the city centre are very, very low, at round about 1%. In terms of the sequential test, consideration has been given to both Silver Hill and Barton Farm. But what is relevant, even your council strategic planning officer does confirm that neither Silver Hill or Barton Farm are available. So we say that we pass the sequential test. In summary, the proposals have merit making the most efficient use of an existing building and safeguarding jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr Simmons. And the same procedure as before, there could be some further questions for you from the committee?
Yes Chair, we have a question from councillor McLean, thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you Chair. Mr Simmons, I wonder would you define for me the meaning of, she apparently has a permission for, because I can go in there, I can buy a light bulb or a thing to hang a picture on the wall, which are not large and bulky. So could you just expand on the definition? Thank you.
Sorry, I missed the first part of your question councillor McLean, sorry.
Could you possibly expand on the definition of large and bulky items which the permission is currently for? I can go into Homebase and buy a wall hanging mount, a tin of paint or a light bulb, but they're not large and bulky.
Of course, you're entirely right. And you may have, I think the words that I used in my presentation was that the current goods condition is largely bulky. And it's a sort of a quirk of the planning system. Generally, we take the view that bulky goods include DIY and associated goods, furniture, carpets and electricals. But of course, we all know, you're exactly right that many DIY stores, and in fact many electrical stores, do sell items that are not bulky and you can comfortably walk out of without having access, for example, to a van. So you're entirely correct. But in terms of this condition, as I say, it's largely for bulky goods, but it is slightly wider than that, and it does in fact allow for non-bulkie goods as well. So really that just reaffirms the fact that we already have a goods condition in place that has a degree of flexibility. And just reaffirming my point that the condition is not restricted, for example, just to Homebase. So ordinarily, other occupiers, other retailers could occupy the premises based on this condition. But you're exactly right, that the condition does allow for more than than what we would consider to be large and bulky goods.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Simmons. Vice Chair, any further questions?
Yeah, we have a question from councillor Laming Chair.
Councillor Laming?
Thank you Chair. I'm a bit of a lost here, maybe I'm not understanding this correctly. You're saying that they have a lease which lasts for another four years.
Correct.
To change the goods they can sell, but they intend to stay there and you intend to let them stay there. So I don't understand why we need to change the specification at this time.
Okay, good point and it is a logical question. As I said in my address, this is all to do with future-proofing the building. As you're probably aware, Homebase have been in different ownerships over the last sort of five, 10 years. And indeed, their future has been uncertain. And in fact, they have pulled out of a number of locations across the country. Royal London would love Homebase to stay and in fact, as I said, a new five-year lease has been agreed. But we don't know, and I suspect Homebase don't know, what their position is going to be in five years' time. It would be great if they stay, but this is all about providing an assurance and future-proofing the building.
Okay councillor Laming. Okay councillor Laming. I assume yeah.
No, no further questions Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Megan, anything you'd like to pick up, having listened to the public speakers?
Thank you Chair, I'd just like to pick up and point out on page 85 of your agenda there is the condition that was originally put on the application, if you want clarification on that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Dave, that's useful. So we'll move then into questions from councillors. Now, this is not sort of a usual report that we have and I found it very difficult to split it into sections. We have two officers with us, extra to Megan, who knows all about it, as well as Julie Pinnock. And so we have Joan Ashton and Mark Fletcher with us. So shall we see how we go in asking questions? It's a very full report. So shall we see on how we go with questions on any aspect of the report? Can I ask Megan to start with, that we have a large number of objections? I can't remember, I can't find the page now, 258 sticks in my mind, which has triggered it to come to committee. Yeah, 268, 263 in fact, 16 letters of support. And could you just explain, because every one of the four applications has the same number of objections? Could you just clarify those objections?
I can, I can Chair. It was the, well, all the applications were commented on. So every objection was written, every case number, objecting on all the cases. Therefore, they were put on every application and it was exactly the same for every application we had for Homebase. And there was a large petition for the objecting to the proposals as well.
Okay, right, thank you. Vice Chair, any questions from the committee?
No questions indicated Chair. Oh, I beg your pardon, we have councillor McLean with a question for Megan.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you Chair, Megan hi. The 263 representations against the application, how many of, because I tried looking through it, how many of them showed planning reasons rather than emotional reasons for going against it?
I don't know the exact number, but there were a number I could guess. I would say about 20% of them showed actual planning reasons.
Even on the petition?
Yes, the petition was just a number of signatures, it was just signing an objection, just signing, it didn't put any comments
Yeah.
for against it. So I'd say 20% are planning reasons, the rest were reasons that weren't planning, material planning reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I have a question for our economic team, if that's possible.
Thank you, yes.
You briefly touched on the pandemic, but could you just give us a bit more of an idea of how the Covid-19 pandemic has impacted our high street? And has that had any role in your decision to strongly object to this application to change the uses of this site? Thank you.
Hi there. In terms of the pandemic, obviously, I think obviously as illustrated, the number of vacant units has increased within the Town Centre, as kind of outlined by the figures in January and October. Shall I think it's increased by about 3%? From I think 6 something to 9 something. In terms of, that wouldn't be a reason why we've, we would have had the same recommendation in relation to the matter if it hadn't increased, i.e. if this happened pre-pandemic, we had the same view in relation to it.
Okay, thank you. There are no further questions indicated Chair.
Okay, thank you. Debate?
I beg your pardon Chair, as I was saying, that a question came in from councillor McLean for Mark, thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you again Chair, hi Mark. Couple of questions that are coming out of things that are very, very current. There's obviously been a huge effect that the role of the internet has had on shopping, which more and more people are getting their goods delivered to home, which is putting pressure on the viability of high street shops. I wonder, A, could you comment on, do you think retail itself is going to change? And looking at the bigger stores that are now under pressure, what do you see as the future of those? Are they just going to remain empty or turn into hotels? Some views please, thank you.
That's fine councillor, no problem at all. In terms of, I mean I think kind of obviously the growth of the internet, as has been happening for obviously the last 10, 15 years. And I think anecdotally, you are going to see more and more people use the internet for some shopping related activities. And I think with high streets, they were already changing anyway. So I think a lot of high streets have moved towards more kind of destinations. And that's obviously probably demonstrated in the last 20 years of the kind of fall in conventional units and obviously the growth in kind of things like coffee shops and other activities in the town centres. Now I think obviously with the pandemic, when people change their shopping habits, sometimes it will, it may increase that effectively. In terms of support in high street, I mean I certainly think with Winchester, we've got quite a diverse high street, fairly unusual actually in some ways. So obviously whilst we've obviously seen the collapse of things like the Arcadia Group this week, a lot of the units within Winchester are kind of independent and Winchester is more kind of a destination than many conventional high streets. So that answers your question.
Thank you.
Chair, councillor McLean has a question for Megan now, if that's possible, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Megan, the city council has declared a climate emergency effectively and is trying to take vehicular transport out of the centre of Winchester. This location has a large car park attached to it that is outside the centre of Winchester. Is it not, or should we not be looking to follow our own wishes to reduce our carbon footprint by moving businesses outside the centre that already have their own car parks? Thank you.
Who's going to answer that? I'm not sure Megan. Who's going to answer that? I'm not sure, Megan. All that's her speciality. I'll give you first go, Megan.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it does benefit from a large car park. It would have out-of-town cars coming to the destination, but that doesn't, that doesn't do away with the policy reasons for refusal and the reasons that we should retain that retail on our high streets to support the viability and vitality of our high streets.
Chair, if I could just add, I would suggest say to that as well is that the nature of that is because it's bulky goods and, you know, we anticipate people would go there in their vehicles. What we want people to do when they come to the town centre is use our car pride or use our car parks on the external parts of the town and come into it in sustainable modes and keep the high street vibrant and economic. And I think that's what you've heard from, from colleagues of ours, from our economy team and from our policy team. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions, Chair.
Right. Debate? Shall I start off? I, I think it's absolutely essential that we keep the vitality of our city centre. We have always resisted, because of the very full policies that you've got there, we've always resisted the move from the city centre to out-of-town shopping. People who've been on the committee for some time will recall that one very large store wanted to shut down in the city and move out, and that was resisted, and that was the right decision. And we've heard from Mr Simmons with respect about future-proofing, but I, I think we need to future-proof Winchester and the town centre. Yes, Barton Farm and Silver Hill are not ready yet, but they will be. And once COVID is over, then, you know, we can start to put all this very difficult situation behind us. I don't think there should be a need for people to have to travel out to buy food and the types of goods that this application is requesting. And the, there is already quite a wide permission of goods to be sold, bulky goods. And we must, in my view, keep the economy and the vitality of our city centres vibrant. And to approve this, we'd not do so.
We have councillor, councillor Cleare, Chair, for debate.
Thank you, Chair. Well, obviously, due to COVID, it faces the challenge to traders in city centres and all around the district. So I think in these times especially, we need to focus on the high street and support them. If we do not, I fear they will die. We must strengthen Winchester city centre, and indeed, I feel across the district. It's a very uncertain market in very uncertain times. But once COVID is over, then we could look at these type of applications perhaps again. But at the moment, support your high street, it is vital, I fear. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, we have councillor McLean for debate.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. You can see, I've been listening to this one quite carefully. And the thing, I suppose, one of the things that gives me some concern here is we're saying people would drive out to shop there. Well, the people who lived in the central Winchester would carry on shopping in the central Winchester. People wouldn't be driving out, outside of the centre to go shopping, no point. I think it would, if, the way it would break down, I think it would make that part of Winchester far more vibrant if an activity like this could take place there, and it would certainly employ a large number of people. And at the end of COVID, I think, as we all know, there are going to be a large number of people looking for work. So I'm sorry, I can't support the application.
Question, any further contributions to debate?
I'd like to just say a word or two, if I may, Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you. I've read this report with great care, and I think our officers have put a lot of time and effort into looking at the options in front of us. And I very much respect the conclusion that they have come to. I don't think that there is any justification whatsoever for changing the sort of goods that we allow to be sold from this site. I think it has the potential and has done in the past and will, I'm sure, do in the future to do very well at selling the sort of things that it does. But I think that encouraging people out of the city centre at this time is the very last thing we should be doing. So I shall be definitely supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further contributions? If not, shall we move to the vote? This application has been recommended for refusal. The reasons for refusal are on page 94. It's a short paragraph, but it does cover a multitude of policies. And so I'll now call upon Dave to do a roll call of members to indicate how they are voting. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. Absolute Cleare?
Yeah, I support the officers, so against the application. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Evans?
Yeah, refuse the application.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Refuse the application.
Councillor Laming?
Refuse the application.
Councillor McLean?
For the application.
Councillor Reed?
For the application.
Councillor Rafael?
Refuse.
And councillor Ritter?
Refuse.
Councillor Reed, do you mind if I could just clarify, are you for the recommendation to refuse or against?
To refuse the application.
Thank you. So that's seven.
I didn't quite hear that, Dave. Was that refuse or for? You were voting to refuse the application?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, thank you for clarifying again. That's seven, to refuse and one against.
So that application is refused. Thank you very much. And we move on to the second application of the afternoon. Do we need some time to put the presentation up? I'll just announce what it is. Agenda item 11. And there it is on the screen. This is the second application. Again, 19/01267-FUL, Homebase application two. The application is external alterations, including covering of the garden centre, alterations to the car park and service yard and associated works. Megan is the case officer all afternoon, and over to you, Megan, for your presentation.
The second one on the Homebase site. The application is for the splitting of the building into three separate units. External works are proposed for the three units. This includes covering over the garden centre outside as well. It also proposes some changes to the service area at the rear of the site and some changes to the configuration of the car park to the front. This application has been considered under its own merits and is considered that the splitting of the building and all other associated works in the proposal would be acceptable under the current planning policy. The original condition to restrict the building for the sale of bulky goods only will remain on the whole building. Therefore, this application is recommended for approval, subject to the conditions as set out in my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, and, and condition on the update sheet that I've, I've put on there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for reminding us that it's a, that's an additional condition, condition four, which is on page three of our update sheet, which I know we've all read. So we have public speaking again. First person is director, Stuart Vandy. Good afternoon again, Mr Vandy.
Good afternoon again, Chair. Thank you.
So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. On this occasion, I don't support the officer's recommendation, I'm afraid. The application provides alterations, include, including subdivision and covering of the existing garden centre as your officer has set out just there. I consider that these alterations are designed to increase the turnover and the trading efficiency of the building if, as, as, as has been suggested previously, Homebase were to, were to move, move, move out. I would stress that is not Homebase's intention at the moment, and the, it's the trading efficiency, I think, that is being enhanced through these, through, 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 through these alterations. That is effectively pounds per square foot in, in, in kind of trading, trading terms. The effect is to multiply, in my opinion, the, the, the trading impact on Winchester city centre. And I'm, I'm concerned for that matter. It's not an issue of whether Homebase remains or otherwise. These, these issues are related to planning policy and they are related to town centres first and the primacy of the development plan in, in making, in assisting you in making those decisions. Once more, I wanted to just highlight as well that whilst COVID has created a challenging changing condition, sorry, challenging trading condition for some retailers, Homebase continues to grow and wants to ensure that the bulky goods needs of the city are met in what we believe to be the most sustainable location. There's no requirement from Homebase for any of these alterations to the external appearance of the building, nor the additional trading, trading space that would be covered by, that would be created by covering the garden centre. The application proposals appear as an attempt at making the location more attractive to retailers by, through both the subdivision and the, the, the covering of the, of the garden centres to create more enclosed floor space. We are concerned on that basis purely on the impact on Winchester and surrounding centres, as well as the development plan strategy that's been referenced in, in the previous application as well. For that reason, we consider that the alterations should be resisted by the councillors and provide, and, and that's, that's our, that's our piece, really. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There could be questions for you from the committee. We'll just wait a few seconds to...
There is indeed a question, Chair, from councillor McLean.
Councillor McLean.
Again, thank you, Jeff. Which, you've mentioned in your presentation that doing the, the works here would actually prepare the business to do a higher turnover than it, than currently it's set up to do. But would not Homebase for the next four years get the benefit of that as well? Are they cutting off their nose to spite their face by not agreeing with this? Thank you.
No, I think Homebase wouldn't benefit from these alterations. There's no requirement from Homebase to cover the garden centre, nor to, to subdivide the unit. They wish to trade it in its exact format as it is at the moment, councillor McLean. The, the situation of increased turnover from that floor space, from that building, really requires the, the works to be carried out and for those to be occupied by what would effectively be like a mini retail park. And I, I have concerns about how that would compete with the town centre units. I hope that helps.
Not really, but thank you.
Chair, we also have a question from councillor Laming.
Councillor Laming.
Thank you, Chair. The question I have for you is if they changed the building in the way that's proposed on this application, could you actually still trade there with that modification done?
No, it's, the, 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 the format of the building is quite clear. If you've been in there, it's a single, large, large trading floor space with, with the mezzanine. And if you were to chop it into three, it just wouldn't suit, suit, suit Homebase's requirements for the building.
Thank you.
No further questions for Mr Vandy, Chair. Thank you.
Once again, thank you very much, Mr Vandy, for coming on. If you could just turn your microphone and camera off, and we move to supporter, Mr Simmons. When you're ready, Mr Simmons, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. I'm not going to deal with the Homebase points again, because I, I dealt with those with the previous application. This is a simple application. It comprises two elements. The covering of the existing garden centre and alterations to the existing building, the car park and the service yard. I think what is very important here, in terms of any suggestions of harm and impact, is that this application results in a loss of retail floor space of about, well, in fact, is 446 square metres, which approaches 5,000 square foot. So accordingly, the proposals cannot have an impact, and, and there's no issue here in terms of any retail matters. The second element relates to the works to the existing building, and it would be beneficial in, in terms of improving the appearance and the function of the building. With respect, this is a very simple, straightforward application. And I would request and you to take up the officer's recommendation of approval for this one. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could start the questions. You said that there would be a loss of floor space of 5,000 square foot. So why would you come forward with this application?
What did it, what, what's happening, Chair, is that the, in effect, the garden centre is, is being lost. So the, the, the area of the garden centre is greater than the area that is being covered.
Yeah, does that answer my question?
I, I, I think, so what we've got at the moment, we've, we've got an existing building with a garden centre that is added on to it. In effect, this application removes the garden centre and creates about three-quarters of the garden centre, but not all of the garden centre, into a covered area. So I guess in answer to your question, what we're doing here is, is making a more efficient use and more effective use of the site by losing part of that garden centre floor space.
Okay, I'm not sure I see the logic of that, but I take what you're saying. Any further questions, question?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Reed with a question. Thank you.
Councillor Reed.
Good afternoon. Just remind me, Mr Simmons, if you would please, the new lease that has been signed with Homebase was for five years. And when would that actually run out?
What I'm being told is that the lease was signed in the year 2019, rather. So it's got about another four years to run, so it will run until 2024.
So if permission is granted on this application and Homebase stay where they are, and they don't want to implement, or which is something that you as a company would implement, while Homebase is still on site?
That, that's exactly right. Whilst Homebase stay on the site, Royal London would not implement this permission. The reason for these applications is that the future of Homebase has been very, very uncertain, that there has been a change in ownership. And Royal London, as a responsible landlord, landowner, have been looking to future-proof this site in the event that there were problems with Homebase and that they were forced to close. But you're, you're exactly right that if, if Homebase are able to trade for the remainder of their lease, then Royal London would not be implementing this permission, should you, should you grant approval.
Basically, you're looking for diversity of use of the land.
What it would give Royal London is, is the flexibility to reuse this building in the event that Homebase were to stop trading. Yeah, so... to reuse this building in the event that Homebase were to stop trading. Yeah, so you're correct.
Thank you, Simmons.
Vice Chair, any further questions?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simmons. Until the next time.
Thank you.
Turn your microphone and camera off. Megan, any updates from you?
No further updates. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So it is quite a short report. So we will have questions on anything. Just a reminder that we have an extra condition four on our update sheet, in case you wish to ask questions on that.
I have a question, Chair, if I may.
Thank you, yes.
On page 102, under Economic Development, it says, "On balance, we've not found that the case has been proven for dividing the site into three separate units or for creating additional employment opportunities, and therefore cannot support this application at this stage." And also, it goes on to say, "It's even more crucial to support the vitality of the High Street." Why, given that response from our economic development team, is this recommended for approval? I don't understand.
Who's going to answer that? Megan, are you?
Thanks, Chair. Sorry, sorry, yes. Well, the splitting of the three units is not contrary to planning policy. It would still retain the same condition for bulky goods, if that's what you want to call it, to remain on the site for the three separate units. I think the economic development comments were comments made on all four applications in one, and they were the same comments for each and every one of the applications.
Could we have a comment from Mark? Are you still with us, Mark Fletcher? Oh, good. You are still here.
I am still here, yeah.
Did you mean that comment to not to this application?
Yeah, and I must be party to this application, I'm afraid, so the kind of comments from another member of the team. I mean, obviously, kind of in terms of what I've looked at today kind of relates to the first application rather than this one, effectively.
So what do you think?
Well, obviously, the comments of the team were kind of in accordance with, obviously, what was read out by councillor Rutter in relation to this application.
Right, okay. Vice Chair, any further?
I don't think I have to add to that.
I'm not sure that answers my question, really, but we do have further questions, Chair. We have a question from councillor Reed. We have a question from councillor Clear. Thank you.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. And this is a question, again, looking at Mark, if I may. Looking at the report, has already been reported on 102 page, this appears to be something that would directly challenge the High Street, in my mind. Could I ask Mark if he agrees with the comment, the report, and any further information that he might be able to give us? Because we seem to have two different elements coming out of the same office.
We do.
In terms of, kind of, obviously, this application, I mean, the views are kind of expressed in our comments that we've given in relation to it. Obviously, kind of in terms of the recommendation by officer in the planning team, obviously disagrees with the view of the economic development team in this particular instance.
Councillor Reed, are you happy with that answer, councillor Reed?
I'm still a little confused, shall we say. I'll leave it at that point. Thank you, Mark.
Councillor Clear? Oh, sorry. Before you do that, councillor Clear. Julie, you want to come in?
Chair, I only wanted to say that sometimes it is the case that our consultees, you know, they have a raison d'etre and they will give us a comment. And then it's your officer's job in the planning team to assess those and analyse them and interpret them in accordance with our planning policies. And in this case, whilst the unit is proposed to be divided into three, it doesn't increase the shopping area that already exists there, and in fact, it reduces it. And therefore, we could identify harm from that. And I think, you know, it might be useful if we heard from Joan Ashen, if we wanted to sort of follow that line of questioning from our policy team. But I think that's why your officers are recommending approval. Because whether it's one trader or three, in many ways, as long as you have that condition on to limit the range of goods, doesn't therefore detract from the vitality and viability of the High Street, then we couldn't substantiate a reason for refusal, Chair, and hence our recommendation to you.
Yeah. Yes, it would be useful to hear from Joan. Joan, are you there?
Hello, sorry, my mistake. Yes, in policy terms, as was described in the previous application, the main issue that we had a problem with was the use of the building. And we did have quite a debate about all the four applications, whether they, to the extent to which they can be separated into constituent sort of parts. And this may be where some of the issues about conflicting advice are perhaps arising. Nevertheless, they have been treated as for individual applications. And this one is purely for physical alterations to the building. And as such, doesn't particularly raise any policy concerns. It is the case that this may end up with split into four units. But does not mean that bulky goods, per se, or do-it-yourself goods could not still operate from there. We have the Trade Park and other similar businesses in Winnell that are a lot smaller than Homebase. Our concern is with the use of the site. We can't protect Homebase, per se. That would not be our job. So I think that this doesn't raise any particular policy concerns. And I hope that that answers your questions. Let's notwithstanding, it may, you know, raise some concerns for the operation of Homebase. And obviously, your speaker was, you know, speaking with his particular interests in mind. But from a planning policy point of view, it doesn't raise any particular issues.
Yeah, I think, Joan, this is our problem as a committee. So officer's saying it doesn't raise any policy concerns. But we're also aware of the difficulties that retail stores are facing, especially at the moment. We've had a request from the government to be easy on these retail stores. And here we have an application for something which the current tenant, who has the right to be there presumably for another four years, doesn't want to use. So is there, and we have the assurance from Mr. Simmons, that they're not intending to implement this if approved? Is there anything we can do, condition-wise, informative-wise, to protect the wishes of Homebase? And that's probably a planning question. Julie?
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair. No, regrettably not, Chair. Because, you know, whilst, you know, I'm sure members would want to support an existing trader like Homebase or any other of that ilk, actually, we're a land use planning commission. We can only sort of deal with land use matters. And in this case, I think what we've heard from the speakers is that Homebase have their contract renewed for, you know, another four years. If we granted this planning permission today, only one of the conditions says it must be implemented within three years. So I think, you know, maybe there's an assumption that if Homebase ceased to trade in that time, the current landowners might look to put it to another use and do these works. If that didn't happen, it would lapse in any event, Chair, given the timeframe that the speaker advised us that Homebase have their contract extended to.
But even if a permission has lapsed, it does make the likelihood of it, if another application came in, it does set a precedent that probably the application would succeed.
That's right, Chair. And I think in policy terms, you know, we're saying there's no policy objection to the alterations that are proposed by this, to reconfigure the building in a different way and rather than have one larger user to operate the same range of goods, but perhaps across three smaller units, which would still be reasonably large. I think, was it, I'm not sure if it's three or four, but not the Homebase model.
Councillor Clear, sorry to keep you.
No, no problem, Chair, because I think mine has really been answered, or then again, not answered. Because I was going to ask Mark just to comment further on this economic development comment on this application. But it doesn't appear that he can comment further, so I am very confused on that, Chair. But so I think I'll leave it with there. But thank you for the time.
Well, councillor Raphael with a question, Chair.
Councillor Raphael.
Thank you, Chair. Julie's covered my question. I was going to ask about the three-year expiration. And if Homebase are there for four years, would they insist on building it after three years?
I think, Chair, what we've heard is from the applicant is that, you know, if Homebase fulfil their contract, let's say, and remain, then this permission would lapse. But who's to say whether they would apply again to renew it, as you said? And we'll have to test that on the prevailing policy at that time.
We have a question from councillor McCain, Chair.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's Julie, I think. Julie, if the application's granted, the three-year period comes up and Homebase is still in there, they can just apply to an extension of the application, can they not, through the council?
Yes, Chair, they would need to apply again because the permission is for three years. And they could apply for a further three-year period if they chose to at that stage.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any more?
No further questions, Chair, no.
So we're in debate.
Shall I start things off, Chair? Hello? Hello? Can't hear anything.
Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me. I think councillor Evans froze for a moment, sorry. Are you okay for me to go ahead, councillor Evans?
Yes, yes. For some reason, it suddenly all went dead for a couple of seconds.
That's happened to me as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Were there any, I think we were at contributions to debate.
Yes, I think I was going to, I think I was going to kick things off, Chair. Thank you. I think this is actually quite a difficult application to consider. We all want Homebase to succeed and to stay there. It's been a very much appreciated part of our local shopping scene for decades. And assuming that they carry on until at least 2024, this application will be irrelevant because it will have come out of time. So, and I would also be very disappointed to see the end of the garden centre. Apart from nothing else, it's a bit of greenery around that rather concreted-over part of the city. So I'm minded, and also given the economic impact of three more retailers up at Winnell, instead of just one large one, the potential four, I am concerned about the impact on the High Street. And I am minded at the moment to vote against this application for it to be changed into three different retail units, albeit with the restriction that we know about on what they should be selling. That's my current thoughts, anyway. Thank you, Chair. We have two more contributions to debate, councillor Reed and councillor Laming.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. The reason for my question to Mark was based on the fact that if a permission is granted, then there is more time left that the permission, in fact, would lapse. Yes, it's quite sensible that this application has come forward. I can understand it. There are a number of similar type of units within the Portsmouth and Farham area, which have done exactly this with their buildings. It is covering their back. Sometimes it's not so easy to pass a building on which is extremely large when somebody only wants half the size or part of that size. So I understand the application. I think we, as a planning committee, have got to take out the name of the operator because I think that, to some extent, is misleading us. I think there's, it's a perfectly logical planning way of going down, trying to get a greater diversity of use from a single, what is currently a single structure. I'm not particularly happy with that. I like the idea of the green space. That is quite what I can actually think of. But nonetheless, from a planning point of view, I don't think there's any reason why we should not grant this application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Laming.
Thank you, Chair. I do find this is a particularly difficult application. Because if, one part of me said that if I was the owner of the building, this is exactly what I'd be doing to safeguard its future. But the second point is that we need to safeguard our policies regardless in the town centre in the event that Homebase decides it doesn't want to be there. So I cannot go along with the recommendation on this one because I feel that we still need to safeguard the High Street as we did in the last application. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any further?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor McLean for debate. Thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Just one point, really. I heard what the applicant has said about future-proofing the building. Here in, or just outside of Bishop's Whelton in Hedges End, there was a Homebase retail site that is boarded up, closed up, and has been for probably the last three or four years, with nobody wanting to go in there because it's too big. So I can see why they're trying to future-proof. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair, any further contributions?
No further debate, Chair.
I do have something to say, too. I would like to query why this is happening now, unless someone knows something that we don't know. Because we hear that the current tenant doesn't want it now. And also, it's got another four years to run. But I'm struggling, to be quite honest, to find a planning reason to refuse it. We're told that it's not going to harm the character of the area. It's not going to alter the appearance at all. So on balance, I feel I have to support the recommendation to approve, except for due diligence premature. But that might not be for me to judge. So yes, I will be supporting the application. Now, given, there's no more contributions, Vice Chair?
No further contributions, Chair.
This application has been recommended for approval. We have the conditions on page 119 and 120 with informatives. We have an additional condition four on page three of our update sheet, which ensures that the use of the building remains. which ensures that the use of the building remains the same. And I will pass over to Dave Shaw for the committee to indicate whether they are approving or refusing or abstaining for this application. Over to you, Dave.
Thank you. I'll start with councillor Clear.
Four.
Councillor Evans.
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Yes, I'm for approving this.
Councillor Laming.
Against.
Councillor McLean.
Or.
Councillor Reed.
For.
Councillor Rafael.
Against.
And councillor Rutter.
Abstain.
So, Chair, that's five, four, two against and one abstention.
Thank you very much. So that application is approved. Members, it is 3:11. Do you want to carry on to the next item or would you like a short break?
A short break, I think, five minutes, Chair, is that possible?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Right, so just after quarter past, it's nearly, just gone ten past three and we will have a short break until just after quarter past three.
As we say, a quick roll call, councillor Clear.
Yes, here, thank you.
Councillor Evans.
I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Present.
Councillor Laming.
Present.
Councillor McLean.
We'll come back to him.
Yeah, councillor Reed.
I was back.
Councillor Rafael.
Present.
Councillor Rutter.
Present.
Councillor McLean.
I'm present. I just dropped out again there for a second. I'll come back in now. Can you hear me?
Yeah, let's break down. Thank you. Yes, so we're ready to start the next item.
So we move now on to agenda item 12. Still at Homebase Limited, Eastern Lane, Winchester, and still the same application number, McLean, stroke, O1223, stroke, F U L. And the proposal description is reconfigured mezzanine floor of 2,323 square metres. Case officer is Megan Osborne. And when you're ready with your presentation, Megan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. This application is for the erection of a mezzanine floor within the existing Homebase unit. Although the proposed works are internal, they still require planning permission. The proposal would remove the current smaller mezzanine floor and replace with a larger proposed mezzanine floor. This can be seen on the slide, so the top two units would have a mezzanine floor. The use of the existing unit would remain the same as previously consented for the sale of bulky goods. This application is recommended for approval, subject to conditions as set out in my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we move to the public speaking. Objector, first of all, Mr Stuart Vandy. Good afternoon again, Mr Vandy.
Good afternoon again.
And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. The application is to increase the floor space of this out-of-centre retail location by a further 883 square metres. That's set out in your officer's report, but that's important. It requires planning permission for very good reasons. For the same reasons that are set out by the officer under the application, one, in relation to impact on the city centre, the fragile nature of the retail trading, retail trading generally due to COVID, and the fact that this floor space isn't required by any specific occupier that's been identified. For these reasons, I think the proposal should be resisted by committee members. There's neither a pressing need nor requirement for additional bulky goods floor space that has been identified, as far as I can tell. And therefore, the potential additional trading floor space proposed here has the clear potential, in my mind, to have an impact and potential harm on the city centre as well as the regeneration efforts that have been set out previously at Silver Hill and Barton Farm. It begs the question to my mind, and it's been wrestled with earlier as well, why approve a further bulky goods floor space in this location when there's been no occupier identified? Is this the same point as before, really, I suppose? It seems to undermine, to my mind, confidence both in the existing occupier but also of the town centre as to what is exactly happening with this area of the town. And I know that the officer, in their conclusion, has considered that it keeps the appearance of the building and the fact that the bulky goods condition would remain, as well as being highlighted. But my concern here relates directly to that additional floor space. That's 833 square metres of out-of-centre trading floor space, which is currently restricted but may very well, you know, if other proposals to remove that restriction were approved in the future, I have concerns about how this would affect the town centre. There appears to be, with respect, very limited consideration on this by the officers, both your development management officer and your economic development officer, as to what those effects may or may not be. And it's difficult for me to balance the advice on this item with the advice that you've been provided on application four, which considers that 167 square metres of additional floor space may have a detrimental effect on the town centre. And I can't quite square that in my mind. On the basis of this, I consider the proposal conflicts with adopted development plan policy and that no significant material considerations have been identified that would outweigh that conflict. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good timing. Just wait to see if Vice Chair has any requests to ask you questions.
No questions at present, Chair.
No. So thank you very much, Mr Vandy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we move to the supporter, Mr Danny Simmons.
Thank you again. Yeah, good afternoon again, Chair.
And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. A lot of the same points in relation to this application in terms of providing the flexibility and future-proofing the building. As has already been explained, the building already has a mezzanine floor. These proposals will replace the existing mezzanine in a reconfigured format. It does involve the increase, a modest increase in floor space of 883 square metres. But I think it's relevant to your consideration that there is a loss of floor space in relation to the previous application. And therefore, the net increase is only 400 square metres. So it's a small amount, a modest amount. And with respect, that amount is not going to have any material impact. Clearly, the mezzanine will be subject to the same goods condition. So logically, there is no issue in terms of impact or sequential test. And again, with respect, I would ask you to support your officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just start the question? Could you just explain again your statement that there's only a net increase of around 400? I didn't write down any that.
Yeah. So what that does, you'll recall, on the previous application, you had the loss of floor space from the garden centre.
Okay.
And on the basis that you've now approved that application, that if you were to approve the mezzanine, that when you add the two together, there is only a net increase of 400 square metres.
I'm with you. Thank you very much. Vice Chair, any further questions?
No further questions, Chair.
So thank you very much, Mr Simmons.
Thank you.
The just four. Megan, anything you'd like to pick up? I think you're muted, Megan. Right.
None for me, thank you, Chair.
Okay. So we'll go to committee questions, members' questions. Could I start off by asking one of our officers, I don't know who wants to answer, about the effects we heard from Mr Vandy, who was concerned about the possible effects on the city centre. And then we heard from Mr Simmons that the 883 square metres was a modest increase. Would either officer like to comment on those two comments?
I'll direct that to Joan, if I may.
Joan?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I was going to suggest perhaps. Right, I think there were two questions raised there. First was the effect on the city centre. Well, I think, again, this is in some ways similar to the previous application in that there is no change proposed to the details of the A1 use in that it would still be bulk goods and DIY etcetera as specified on that site. It's not supposed to be, our main consideration was not to establish an open A1, an open retail use on that site which could potentially be competing with the city centre. It's the particular nature of the goods being sold that benefit from that particular location on the Homebase site as it is and that that would still remain, whether there was a mezzanine floor or not. Some members may recall that I believe the existing mezzanine floor was itself put in by Homebase some years ago. So that is perhaps something to bear in mind. I understand it might well be changing the nature of the building, but it's not changing the nature of the goods sold, which should not particularly be competing with those in the city centre. So that is not so much of a concern. In terms of the amount of floor space, well, modest. 883 square metres is a reasonable amount. I believe the superstore that was proposed on there was going to be about 1,000 square metres internal, so that would give you some idea. It's slightly smaller than that. I take his point that you have the loss of the garden centre. And overall, the increase in retail is only 400. That's still equivalent to several shop units that you would find downtown. Quite a number of shop units, in fact, downtown, depending on their size. But I think because the main concern really is the use of the site and the bulky goods, DIY goods condition that will remain, I don't think we felt that the planning policy needed to get too much concerned about the need for the additional floor space or not at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So questions on any of the report, 118, 119?
There are no questions, Chair, thank you.
So there being no questions, debate?
No debate, Chair.
No debate. So we move to the recommendation.
I beg your pardon, councillor McLean would like to debate, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just having a sort of quiet moment. When we looked at the map at the start of this, we saw that there was the Homebase site, which is looking to future-proof itself. And then 100 yards away, there's a Tesco's on the other side of the road that's got all the things in it that they're trying to do with this business. So one's got planning permission some time ago. But we're looking at this fear of ruining the High Street, which I don't think Tesco's did that. So are we just getting a bit overexcited, I suppose, would be my point in debate. Thank you.
Right, is this to do with this application, councillor McLean, the mezzanine floor?
Yes. Well, we're all saying it's going to damage, could be damaging the High Street, maybe not. It's inside the building.
Right, the recommendation is to approve the application.
I realised that.
That's where we're moving, I think. So unless there's any further debate.
No further debate, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This application has been recommended for approval. Over to you, Dave, to do the roll call of members.
Thank you. Councillor Clear.
Four.
Councillor Evans.
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Four.
Councillor Laming.
Or.
Councillor McLean.
Or.
Councillor Reed.
Or.
Councillor Rafael.
Or.
And councillor Rutter.
Four.
That's all members, Chair, in favour.
Thank you very much. So that application is approved. So we move to the final business item of the afternoon, which is agenda item 13. It's the same case number, 19/01268/FUL. The description is the construction of a pod unit falling within classes A1, A3, A5, a bin store and a plant area, and provision of outside seating areas and other associated works. And then on the screen, we can see that the standalone pod is 167 square metres. The case officer is Megan Osborne, and over to you, Megan.
Thank you, Chair. Let's whip through these slides again. This application is for a standalone building located within the existing car park area of the building of Homebase. It's to be used for A1 use, or proposed use, is A1, A3 restaurants and cafes, or A food, A5, which is hot food and takeaways. The proposal requests the flexibility to operate within all three of the proposed uses. The proposed building would be 167 metres squared with glazed elevations and a monopitched roof. This application is considered unacceptable due to the proposal for an A1 use for the reasons as set out in my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we'll move to the public speakers. And the first speaker is the objector, Stuart Vandy. Mr Vandy?
Thank you very much, Chair. Much appreciated. Last time you were here from me today. I support, yes, sorry. I support the officer's recommendation in this case. My client is of the view that the addition of further floor space in this out-of-town location is likely to have a harmful effect on existing traders within Winchester City Centre High Street. The town centre first strategy as set out within the development plan, as well as those regenerations efforts previously mentioned. These considerations are again particularly pertinent, given the COVID situation. But I would just like to highlight as well that this is the size of store that is just the kind of thing that is found on the High Street. An open A1 use potentially in this location or a coffee shop or a restaurant in some similar vein would be directly competing with occupiers on the High Street. This is, I think, is a barn door case of competition in that regard. The out-of-centre retail destinations such as this, they have to be available to meet the needs of customers where town centres can't step up. That's specific to bulky goods. But they shouldn't be allowed to evolve, in my opinion, into locations in their own right that attract customers in the same way as a town centre does or a High Street does. That's been set out for a long time now in both, obviously, your local policy but also national policy. And as a consequence, I'm hopeful that the councillors will support the officer's will support the officer's recommendation. That's everything from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just wait a few seconds to see if there are any questions for you. Vice Chair?
No questions, Chair. Thank you.
No. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your contributions this afternoon, Mr Vendy.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
And then we'll move now to the supporter, Mr Danny Simmons. Hello again, Mr Simmons.
Good afternoon once again.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. In this case, the proposals will have no impact on Homebase. Homebase could stay in occupation. But whether it's Homebase or another retailer in the main unit, the pod unit will be beneficial to the main unit by virtue of linked trips. As is clear from your officer's report, the use of the pod for either an A3 or an A5 use would be acceptable. So the only issue really is whether a use of the pod for retail, whether in fact that is acceptable. And I think here, you've got to be careful, and you've got to look at what your local plan is saying with respect. Your local plan states that proposals for up to 278 square metres will generally be acceptable outside of town centres. Plus, in any event, we say that the size and nature of this unit will provide a valuable facility for the retail and commercial businesses of the Winall area. And contrary to the suggested reason for refusal, there is no justification to suggest that a small unit of this size would result in, to use your officer's phrase, demonstrable harm on the public or private investment in the town or local centres. Indeed, your local plan is clear that the requirement for retail impact only applies to proposals of 500 square metres or more. So we're obviously substantially less than that. So with respect, the view is that that the recommendation, in light of the factors that I've outlined, can't be justified, and that this application should be supported.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll just wait for a few seconds to see if anyone wants to ask you further questions.
We have a question from councillor Reed, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Simmons, are there any food outlets currently on that site? I'm not familiar with the site in general. But I know a lot of these sites sometimes have burger vans or things. Has this particular site?
No, it hasn't. No. So there's no food outlets on this site.
Thank you.
We have a question from councillor Laming, Chair.
Councillor Laming?
Have you done a full proper traffic assessment on this particular idea? This particular road is the most congested road in Winchester.
Yeah.
It is extremely difficult to come out of Homebase at rush hour times because of the traffic coming up from the city and also the traffic coming around from Tesco's. And I think this would be quite detrimental. I'd need a lot of assurances that the traffic would be safe.
It's a good question, councillor. With this application indeed covering all of the four applications, we submitted a detailed transport assessment, which was subject to much discussion with both Hampshire County Councilor's Highways Authority, but also Highways England. And both organisations were content that both individually and cumulatively that the applications were acceptable in highways terms, and there was no prejudice to highway safety. So the answer to your question is yes, we have looked at it. We've looked at it thoroughly, and we've got a clean bill of health.
Could I ask you a question, Mr Simmons? On page 132, you don't need to find it, but on page 132 of our report, it does say that you, as the applicant or the applicant who you're representing, has been made aware that A3 and A5 uses would be acceptable. But you've added in the A1, which is what the officers find unacceptable.
Yeah. Can I raise an issue on that? And it's a very pertinent question. And it's something that Megan can probably address. And I'm glad you've raised the point. Very, very late on in the day, and apologies to Megan, but having read the report, having discussed it with my clients, I did notify Megan this morning that we would be prepared to concede A1. So in other words, we would be happy to accept a permission that restricted the pod to A3 and A5 only. That's notwithstanding what I've just said about retail. But in order to make the decision easier for you, that was a proposition that I put to Megan this morning, and that proposition stands. So if you are able to take this application as being a pod for just A3 and A5, that is something that, on behalf of my client, I would be more than happy to accept.
Okay, thank you. It's rather late in the day this morning.
It is. Apologies. I only notified Megan for the first time this morning, and I accept it was late on in the day. So apologies on that front, but I did ask Megan if it's something that she could consider and could raise with you today. If it's something that you can deal with, as I say, on behalf of Royal London, we would accept the position whereby the pod is only used for A3 and A5 use.
Okay. Probably, I don't know, but I'm going to go to the officers. They will need, because it will need to be consulted across several sections of the city council. So that's why I say it's rather late in the day.
What I would say, sorry, just interrupting, in terms of consultation, what your officers are clear on, and it may be that you ask your policy officer again, but my understanding is that the consultees in-house within the council are content with an A3 or A5 use. And I think that comes out in the officer's report. So it may be that you would not need to reconsult, that your officer's position is quite clear.
I will need to consult with officers, and it could be that we might need a short break to look at those implications. But thank you.
We have a question from councillor McLean, Chair.
Right. We'll come back to that issue, Mr Simmons. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. I don't want to sound like a schoolteacher, but I wish, Mr Simmons, you made it, or the disclosure you've just made, to start this discussion, because we could then have had a much more logical discussion with all the facts in front of us.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. That's let me down a bit.
No, except it's a fair point. I did raise it with Megan this morning. And I thought that Megan may have raised the point in the introduction, which she didn't. And that is why I didn't sort of confuse matters in my introduction. But Chair, because you raised it, I felt that I had an obligation to deal with the point. So that is our position. But agreed, apologies, it was raised late in the day. The reason it was raised late in the day, really, we were prompted by the committee report. And of course, I had to have discussions and get instructions from my client.
It's thrown more confusion now. It's made it harder. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. I can see that, Mr Vendy, you've got your hand up, but I'm afraid I can't go back to you because you've had your three minutes. So Megan? Or Julie? Would you like to comment on the proposal from the applicant?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'd defer to Joan for comments on whether A1, the loss of A1, and the proposal of the use of the site for A3 and A5 would be acceptable.
Or the other position we have, of course, is that we could defer the application. Joan?
Yes, thank you. Yes, this is an interesting application. These sites of units in these locations are quite tricky to categorise and assess at times. On balance, we've taken a policy view that A3, which is a restaurant use, and A5, which is hot food takeaway, which would be like a burger van type thing, could, in theory, would possibly be acceptable, as they could be considered as ancillary and to the role of the retailing on this site, the retail park. Coffee shops and things are quite often associated with these types of uses. And there is indeed a coffee shop on a similar site just over the road. However, it's the open retail A1 that we are more concerned about, establishing a new shopping destination. Albeit, it's not on the large scale that a homebase would be. There is no retail need identified for Winchester, and it is clearly contrary to the town centre-first policy, both nationally and locally. So we feel no need to approve an A1 on this site. That is our position at the moment. I do have to take issue with Mr Simmons quoting our plan incorrectly to us, or rather selectively quoting from DM5, where it does say that small-scale town centre uses up to 278 square metres outside defined centres will be approved. The rest of that sentence says, where they provide a local facility or service. And I think that is the key point. We do not want it to be a destination in its own right. If it was a local facility or service, that would be a different issue. He's correct about the impact threshold. That would be for a formal impact assessment. But nevertheless, we still do feel that, although it is below that threshold, that does not mean that we cannot consider that there may be some effect on the High Street. That effect is undesirable, and it is contrary to policy. There's probably no need to go into it further at this stage, unless we are getting into a debate about it. The issue of changing the application would obviously make a difference, but I suspect there are some legal matters to discuss on that, which I'm not best to comment on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, but councillor Reed has a point of order, Chair.
Councillor Reed, point of order?
Sorry, Chairman. I think this might help out. We are told time and time again, the application before us is the application that we vote upon. I think you've come up with a very good idea, and that is to defer the meeting. We have a further meeting of the planning committee in about 15 days' time, where this could be the first item on the agenda. And possibly a correction in the wording may well get us out of a problem.
You've jumped the gun. I was just drawing breath to suggest the defer to the committee. But I do want to hear from Julie Finnick first of all.
Of course, yes.
The suggestion has been to defer this for... We have a very packed committee in December, because I've already asked for the Westmead application to go on the agenda.
I think councillor Reed's got a good point. We should determine this application on its merits. I think it is too late today to ask this committee to consider to an alternative proposal. If the applicant wishes to withdraw this application and resubmit, and that goes out to public consultation, that's the correct approach. But I think, you know, we wouldn't have time to bring it back for the 17th of December because, you know, if we're changing the description of development and reconsidering that, and I think that would be a different issue, and that would certainly take us around to the new year. I think we should determine this application with basis of its submission, and if the applicant wishes to withdraw it. And then, you know, either way, they can resubmit an application with a revised proposal, Chair.
Okay. So could I have some legal advice here from Michael? Michael, thank you.
Certainly.
So do I go back to the applicant and ask if they want to withdraw the application?
You can do. I would suggest. I think I would concur entirely with what Julie has just described. I think it would be inappropriate for the committee in this instant to adjust the description of development, especially given the lack of consultation, the full context of that proposal on the back of that. How that affects timing, I suppose, of the application coming back is a question. But I think it would be better to consider and decide on the application as it stands, as it was presented today.
Okay. So I'm going to act on the advice of our legal adviser. And we've heard from, I can see people want to ask questions, but Julie has recommended that we consider what we've got in front of us. And that's the route I'm going to take. And then the applicant has the choice then of resubmitting the application in a different way, which can be thoroughly consulted upon, because it's all on the hoof really, this. So Vice Chair, you've still got some people wanting to ask questions?
Yes, Chair. We have councillor McLean with a question. Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, Chairman. I think with the bombshell that's literally just been dropped, Mr Vendy, whether I disagree or agree with a lot of his arguments, he was not in full, had full access to what was being discussed. So it would seem to be a bit unfair of the committee, either not to listen to him, or we just... That was a bombshell. That's really hacked me off. Sorry.
Vice Chair, any more? Thank you, councillor McLean. Any more questions?
No more questions, Chair. Thank you.
So debate? The proposal is that we carry on with the discussion of this application as is. Not the legal advice. Any debate?
Yes, please, if I may, Chair.
Councillor Reed?
I can say it quicker than I can type it. Chairman, there are a number of similar units in and around Hampshire that I know of. There's got one here in Waterlooville. There's one in Portsmouth that I know of. All have got a similar type of facility, which is opened up to the availability of fast food as an outlet. Because these sites invariably have, as my question to Mr Simmons was, about a burger van. A lot of these sites do have this type of facility. I don't think there's any reason why we should refuse it on planning. But in this particular case, because their applicant has indicated a change, what I will do is probably abstain from the vote at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further debate?
We have councillor McLean, Chair.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Very, very much like councillor Reed. All over the area, these small pods with coffee shops in them are a very, very good return on a small amount of land. So you can see why the developer is wanting to do it. But if we go right back to the start of this, the developer, or sorry, the owner of the land is saying they will do nothing until Homebase have decided what to do. I'm guessing this will be built before that. But I think that's something I'd like clarified as well before we go through to a vote. And it's too late to do it now, so we've got to wait until...
Yeah. Well, we're discussing the application we have in front of us, which is
We are indeed.
A1, A3, and A5. And so my contribution to debate is that we spent some time with the first application this afternoon in refusing A1 retail. And so now we have a proposal for A1 in this pod. And my worry is, so first of all, there's a contradiction there. We've already refused A1 in agenda item 10. And, you know, why are we going to permit it in item 13? And also, this could then be a destination in its own right. And we've heard from Joan that it is still against policy. So this is the most important thing, isn't it? Is to protect the city centre, to ensure that applications are not damaging the city centre. So I can't support the application as is. And I do think the best route is for the applicant to resubmit, taking away the A1, and then allow officers to assess the application with regards to the... with regards to the city centre. Any further contributions to debate?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Gordon Smith and councillor Clea. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, well, I mean, I know this site quite well. There is actually a coffee takeaway place nearby and also a burger van. I think there's one thing that people who, that we might consider, and that is people who work up around there, getting somewhere to eat. I don't think it's going to detract, it's going to attract people who would otherwise be going to the town centre. You know, people who are going to go to the high street and have a coffee and enjoy the ambiance of our wonderful city centre and not likely to be, to have a detour all the way up to Winall to sit outside Homebase and enjoy the ambiance up there. So I, to me, it seems quite sensible to accept it.
Was there anyone else? Thank you, councillor Gordon Smith.
Yes, yeah, councillor Clea, and then I'd like to make a contribution.
councillor Clea?
Thank you, Chair. I go with the officers on this recommendation for refusal on all the things I said regarding the first application. If you want a cup of coffee, go to your city centre or your local high street. And also, Mr. Simmons, I'm sorry, but I think you came in far too late with what you said towards the end of the application. And it would be very unfair to Mr. Vandy if we did consider it today. But we're not. We're just considering what's in front of us. And I agree with the officer's recommendation for refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Rutter.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to echo councillor Clea's view that it's absolutely clear here that we should be supporting the officer's recommendation and refusing this application. We have to debate the application that is in front of us and that includes class A1. There's absolutely no question that this pod would detract from the city centre high street with that class allowed. And we cannot possibly support it. So I would be supporting the officer's recommendation to refuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last contribution to debate?
It is, Chair.
Thank you very much. So this application has been recommended for refusal. Just a reminder to those who've spoken in favour of this application that it would be allowing A1 when we've already refused A1 on exactly the same site. But this is recommended for approval. And I will pass over to Dave to do the roll call of...
Sorry, Chair. Sorry, Chair, I think you misspoke there. This is recommended for refusal.
Did I not say that?
No, you said recommended for approval.
I'm so sorry. Going to say it again. I don't even remember saying that. I thought, so this is recommended for refusal. And I did actually just add a rider that we would be, if we recommended it for approval, if we approved it, we would be including A1, which we've already refused on exactly the same site. So this application is recommended for refusal. Dave, over to you.
Thank you. councillor Clea?
Yep, I support the recommendation, so I vote for refusal.
Thank you. councillor Evans?
Refusal.
councillor Gordon Smith?
I accept, support the refusal.
councillor Laming?
Refuse.
councillor McLean?
Refuse.
councillor Reed?
Abstain.
councillor Raffel?
Refuse.
And councillor Rutter?
For refusal.
Right, thank you. So that's seven members in favour of refusal and one abstaining.
Thank you. So this application is refused with the condition set out on page 133. And we look forward to perhaps a further application in the future. Thank you very much, members. That concludes our business items for the afternoon. And I think that's the end of our meeting.